Good evening. The Red Sox are leading two to one.[20.11][20.11](laughter) Short order of business here, unless I hear objections, I'm gonna run the meeting according to the main moderator's manual. Couple of points also. You do not speak until recognized by the moderator. Do not interrupt any other speakers while they're speaking. And try to keep your comments as short, but make your comments, make your discussions complete, but make them as short as possible. We don't want to be here cheering the whole game. Gary, Gary Picard may be speaking at the meeting. One of the issues before we start is whether or not we allow him to speak. Because he is a non-resident of the town of Madawaska, we need a two-thirds approval. Do I hear a motion to allow Gary Picard, the town manager, to speak at the meeting? Yes, sir, Mr. Violet? A second? Sir, your name? Okay. All those in favor of allowing Gary Picard to speak, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Mr. Picard will be able to speak at the meeting. Another thing that I want to make sure everybody knows, if you're gonna speak at the meeting, come forward to the microphone so everybody can hear you. First article, to see if the town will vote to authorize a transfer of 150,000 from the ambulance department reserve account to reduce the 2019 tax commitment. The article is recommended by the finance and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept this article as read? Colin Jongo, do I hear a second? Mr. Violet? Any discussion regarding Article Two? There being no discussion on Article Two, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Two passes. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 190,000 to a road project reserve account. Article Three is recommended by both the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept the article as read? Mr. Lizot? And a second? Dana Jongo? Any discussion regarding Article Three? There being no discussion, all those in favor of Article Three, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Three passes. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 10,000 to the sick leave reserve account. Article Four is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Four as read? Mr. Lizot? Do I hear a second? Butch? Any discussions regarding Article Four? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone.
What exactly is a sick leave reserve account?
Anybody wish to address that issue?
So historically, but not so much so, in the latest years, the town used to budget for sick leave reserves. It's an unfunded liability if we don't have the funds set aside. And that is for, for instance, if somebody were to cash out their sick time under the old personnel policy, we would pay out 20 percent of accrued time. So right now, under the employees that are still under that old personnel policy, fall into this payout, if you will, once they get done. So it's an unfunded liability, and we want to start funding that so that we are adequately funded should some of the older employees that have been with us a while, when they decide to retire, if there's any accrued time left, that we have the funds to pay those people out.
Mr. Dufour?
How much of that fund gonna be raised too? You know, is there a limit here, or you're just gonna have this coming up every year for the next 20 years?
So currently, Gary, that fund has a $20,600 balance in it. And what we're going to do is, we're not getting to where we need to be all at once this year, we're just gonna start to build up to that desired amount, but we're not there yet even with, if this Article Four is passed today.
What's the desired amount?
I don't have that answer for you right here.
Well, how can we read money if we don't have a goal?
No cross-examination?
No, but, no, why do we have money? Why do we raise money if we don't have a goal? Except for raising money for on sick leave? You know, is there, is there a limit? You know, do you have a limit for this? I mean, we could ask for $10,000 a year here for the next 20 years, and you, and everybody will say yes at this point. I mean, you guys come here and ask for money, and ask for money, ask for money. But there's no set limits. You don't know where it's gonna go, you don't know what your top number is, you don't know what your bottom number is. How much accrued sick leave is accrued from the old people, from the old employees? Do you know how much accrued sick leave they have? Do you know? Do you have an answer for that?
Gary, I don't have all those answers for you tonight. I mean, we'd have to go into our, into our accounts to see exactly what those numbers are. What we're attempting to do is try to find, there is, there is a target balance, I don't have that amount for you here tonight.
But my point is here, you come to, you come to special town meetings, and you ask for money, you don't even know how much you need. You don't even know how much you need, right? Does any of the board here know how much money we need?
First of all, it's like the town manager said, there's a need to fund that sick leave account for the possibility of some of our older people leaving that are under our current policy that says, when they leave, we owe them X amount of dollars. We need to build that fund. Good question that you're asking is where that limit is. That limit for this year is, we're asking for 10,000. And next year, we will be back, and we will have reviewed everything to see where we fall, how many retirements we've had. We can project that out next year as to exactly where we are. For this year, we're asking to start building that reserve, so that there's no surprises when someone retires out of the blue, and we don't have the funds to be able to fund it. For tonight, Mr. Dufour, all I can tell you is that it's a beginning of a reserve, and that's what we're trying to start, a beginning of a new reserve. The moderator recognizes Dana Jongo. Please come to the microphone. Go next.
I'd like to address Gary. I'm the finance director.
Get closer to the microphone, please.
I'm kinda short. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we're asking for an additional $10,000 for sick leave. Gary, there's no additional sick leave, I think so. There's no additional sick leave benefits that are being given to the employees, because we're now on our new EBT plan and have been for a year. So the sick time policy is basically for the employees that currently still have a balance, and so we can't give you an exact number, because the employees are still allowed to use some balance. So the end result is, is it could go down, obviously, and we won't need a reserve as they either terminate or as they use it. Right now, it's not fully funded. With $30,000, I am confident that it is very close to being funded, as there is no more additional sick days being given to employees annually. Does that make sense?
Wait, 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 wait. No, 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 no. You have not been recognized.
Okay.
Are you, does that complete your?
That does complete my statement, yeah.
Mr. Ray Alaba?
When you retire, you get so many vacation days that you could put on your retirement, and probably some sick days. So on the old system, the old system, what you're talking about, how many days can a person get paid for on his retirement? That you have to know. And you have to know how many days outstanding that you believe you owe. Like Mr. Dufour was telling me, you're coming here, you don't have the amount of days, you start nothing. You know, you should know, we have seven or eight employees that fall in that category, and we pay them a maximum of so many days. Do you have that? If a person has 56 days, do you pay them all back? And if a person's only got five, or you only pay up to 12 days, or 15 days, or 20 days? Do you know that? Do you have that amount? You know, those are things you should know. You need to know how many days you're gonna pay when you retire, you're out to pasture, and we're gonna pay you a maximum of X.
Thank you, Mr. Alaba. Any further discussion or questions? Chad? Wait, wait, wait.
Motion to cease discussion. Pardon? The motion to cease discussion.
In order for that motion to pass, there needs to be a second and then a two-thirds vote before I move on to that. Are there any other people who wish to speak on this issue? Okay, the motion that was made by Mr. Carter is to cease discussion. That is not, there's a second for that motion. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of ceasing discussion, not on the motion, but of ceasing discussion, raise your hand. All those opposed to ceasing discussion, raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion is no longer debatable. Therefore, the motion at this time is to see if the town will vote to appropriate 10,000 to the sick leave reserve account. All those in favor of accepting Article Four, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. The motion passes, the article passes. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,000 to the deferred compensation reserve account. Do I hear a motion to accept that article as read? Chad Carter? Do I hear a second? Pete Clavett, sorry. Article's been made, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion regarding Article Five? Mr. Carter, do you wish to speak on Article Five? There being no discussion or questions regarding Article Five, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Five passes. Article Six, to see if the town will appropriate, will vote to appropriate 35,000 to the deferred vacation reserve account. The article is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Five as read? Mr. Michal? Do I hear a second? Mr. Lizot? Any discussion or questions regarding Article Six? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article Six, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Six passes. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following general funds, general fund estimated revenue sources to be used towards the fiscal year 2018 to 2019 budget appropriations, thereby decreasing the amount required to be raised in property taxes. Veterans exemption, 4,000. Interest and penalties, 20,000. Tree growth exemption, 6,000. Municipal revenue sharing, 237,601. Pilot, La Maison Cadzienne, 15,000. Vehicle excise taxes, 500,000. Boat excise taxes, 2,000. Motor vehicle fees, 10,000. VRF administration, 18,000. Pollution control administration, 42,500. General assistance reimbursement, 10,000. Building permits, 4,000. Inspection fees, 100. Plumbing permits, 2,500. CEO contracted services, 7,500. Community development contracts, 6,000. Ambulance billing fees, 300,000. Ambulance contract with the town of Frenchville, 13,000. Ambulance contract with the town of San Agatha, 9,400. Contracted fire protection, 1,000. Tax, or fuel tax refund, 10,000. Local road assistance program, 85,000. Tent rentals, 2,500. Multi-purpose building rental, 2,000. Insurance premium refund, 9,000. The recommended, the article, the total amount is 1,317,101. Article Seven is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Seven as read? Mr. Staliker? Do I hear a second? Mr. Lizot? Excuse me. Any discussion or questions regarding Article Seven? Yes, ma'am.
I see in here you have a provision for $2,000 for boat excise tax. Since the town of Madawaska gives something for the four-wheelers and everything else and cross-country trails, but they didn't give nothing at all for boats. And because we don't have access to the lake, I believe that the only, since the only boat landing is in Santa Ag, the lake is in Santa Ag, if the town will provide us access to the lake, I believe that we should be able to pay our taxes to the town of Santa Ag, our boat taxes, so that they can improve the boat landing and the facility for us to enjoy our boats and our lake, since the town of Madawaska is now willing to do this. So what my, what I'm asking is, is it possible for us to pay our taxes in the town of Santa Ag, since they're the ones providing the services?
Is there anybody on the town council or anybody in the audience who wishes to address There being nobody willing to answer that question, any further discussion or questions regarding Article Seven? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Seven as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the general government department. Recommended by the finance committee and recommended by the board of selectmen is a sum of 641,043. Article Eight, do I hear a motion to accept Article Eight as read? Chad Carter? Second? Pete Clavett? Any discussion or question regarding Article Eight? Yes, Mr. Staliker, please come to the mic.
Well, what you have is for amount on that, but we have a different amount.
I can't hear you, Mr. Staliker.
We have 720,155.
Mr. Picard will speak on that. Excuse me, apparently I have the wrong version of the warrant. Article Eight, the reason follows, apparently from the corrected version, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government department. The amount recommended is 720,155. The Article Eight is recommended by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Eight as rephrased? Colin Jongo, do I hear a second? Chad Carter? Is there any discussion regarding the rephrased Article Eight? Yes, Mr. Dufour?
Who exactly is the general government department? I think all these departments have changed names over the years.
Mr. Picard will address that question.
So the general government department is comprised of a governing body, the town administration, elections. I believe that's it. And public health. It's the same articles, Gary, the same departments in the articles that were used in last year's
Are there any additional questions, Mr. Dufour?
How many more employees did this department hire this year compared to last year?
Under this budget, we have the same amount of employees, but we are planning on hiring an employee to work in the developing and codes and assessing office. Currently, we still have one employee in that office, but with the assessing work combined with CDPG work, the community development work, there is plans to add a position there only later on in the new year.
Excuse me, on that question there, the hiring the assessor, I believe back in February or January, February, or March, I don't remember which special town meeting we went to, but we are already allocated money for that hiring of that employee, so why is it still in here to be double-funded?
Mr. Picard will address that question.
The extra position, the cost of the assessing position is appropriated out of what was approved at town, that special town meeting with the appraisal project in the assessing warrant article that you mentioned. So not all of the cost of that position is in this budget, it is from that previous appropriation.
Mr. Picard, oh, hold on, Mr. Dufour. Are there, hold on, are there any other people who wish to speak or have questions on Article Mr. Dufour, what's your question?
Back to that position, we had allocated 40, I believe it was $45,000 to hire that employee to pay for his salaries and sick pay and everything. And now we're allocating more money for that same person? We don't even have him hired yet, and you don't even know how much you're gonna pay
In this budget, Gary, we are budgeting for that position, which is under the new, our new employee that we've hired to replace Susie Perry. The part that's not funded in this budget is for the additional position. Okay? Part of, part of the cost of the position is paid for in this budget, for that position, plus the new position that we'll be creating to work within that department. Okay, but not all of it. The new position is only gonna start, the additional position is only gonna start later on in the year, next year, once the new hire has been able to establish his office and get himself situated in his new role.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article Eight? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Eight as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Eight passes. Article Nine, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the development, codes, and assessing department. 229,294 is the amount recommended by both the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Nine as read? Mr. Carter? Do I hear a second? Mr. Lizot? Are there any questions or discussion regarding Article Nine? Mr. Kaye?
Could you explain what Article Nine is? What is the development, codes, and assessing department? I've never heard of these terms before. Why are these all changing?
Mr. Picard is recognized to answer that question.
So the department, Mr. Kaye, is a little different than it used to be. It used to be the Department of Economic and Community Development. Under this budget, what we've done is, once the former employee in that department moved on to her new role with the board, to cause the board and the town manager and the administration to look at the assessing position that we wanted to create, that was already approved at special town meeting earlier last year. And so what we've done is, we merged those roles into one department to, to also do assessing. Code enforcement falls under the, under this budget as well, so the code enforcement officer, the economic development director, and the assessing department, all falls within this arc over here, this department.
Any further questions or discussions regarding Article Nine? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Nine as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Nine passes. Article Ten, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety. Both the finance committee and board of selectmen recommend 1,417,042. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Ten as read? Mr. Michal? Do I hear a second? Mr. Violet? Any discussion or questions regarding Article Ten?
What's involved in the public safety? Anyone?
Mr. Picard will address that question.
So the public safety is comprised of the police department, the ambulance department, fire department, all emergency services.
Police, fire, and what else?
Ambulance.
I still can't answer.
Excuse me, ambulance.
Ambulance. Okay, thank you.
Monsieur Alaba?
I'm probably gonna tell you this is my last time, and I don't come tonight. I don't have a clue what I'm voting for. Zero clue. And I might not be the sharpest knife in the kitchen, but I'm not the dumbest. So I'm voting for something I don't know. You've gotta believe in something that I'm in public safety. You need, you need to be a genius to know what you're voting for. And who came up with that plan? Usually, you have to, to be a board member that would say something referencing that out of you. Now, like I said, I won't be back tonight. I don't know what I'm voting for. Notice it's always me. So that's fine. If you can give me a hand, I'll go see you tomorrow for the DIA.
Any further questions or discussion? Chair, moderator recognizes Mr. Shassy.
The summary account, but if you look on page 103 of your book, page 104, page 105, page 106, I'm not sure about the EMA, but probably, the breakdown of all those departments into one are there. It's why the books were given out early, so people could at least have a book to understand what those articles represented.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article Ten? There being no further discussion or questions, all those in favor of accepting Article Ten, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Ten passes. Article 11, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Madawaska Public Library. The board of selectmen and finance committee both agree, or both recommend 111,464. Do I hear a motion to accept Article 11 as read? Mr. Collins? Colin Jongo, I'm sorry. Do I hear a second? Mr. Lizot? Are there any questions or any discussion regarding Article 11? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Eleven, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Eleven passes. Article Twelve, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Public Works Department. The amount recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-four dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Twelve as read? Sir, your name? And second by Chad Carter, any discussion or questions regarding Article Twelve? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Twelve passes. Article Thirteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for Parks, Recreation, Maintenance, and Safety Complex Department. The amount recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee is four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, twelve dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Thirteen as read? Sir, your name?
Right here.
Okay. The second? Mr. Jandro, Colin Jandro. Any discussion or questions regarding Article Twelve? There being no discussion or questions, all those in favor of accepting Article Thirteen as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for townwide insurances. The amount recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, six-hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept the Article, Article Fourteen as read? A Mr. Eddie Ford, and a second, Mr. Lison. Is there any discussion or questions regarding Article Fourteen? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article Fourteen, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Fourteen passes. Article Fifteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for intergovernmental department. The amount recommended by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Fifteen as read? Mr. Carter, do I hear a second? Colin Jandro. Any discussion or questions regarding Article Fifteen?
Just a quick speech.
Yes, sir. Up to the microphone, please.
To the mic.
Can we just have a clarification of what this means?
Mr. Picard will address that, thank you.
Okay, so, the intergovernmental, governmental budget is comprised of different agencies or organizations that we appropriate funding for. For instance, value recycling facility, Northern, the airport, the Airport Authority in Frenchville, hydrant rental, street lights, Northern Main Development Commission, municipal association, Chamber of Commerce, Public Safety Expo, which is non-funded this year, Sequasentennial for 2019, a hundred-and-fifty celebration, Broadband Coalition, we have a broadband grant program in the works, and we have appropriate money to that every year. This year's appropriation for that is five thousand dollars, the Four Seasons Inn, and also for the farmer's market. Thank you. And, and sorry, and the county taxes part of that as well.
The what?
County tax.
Any further questions or discussion regarding Article Fifteen? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of Article Fifteen, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Fifteen passes. Article Sixteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for social services. The recommended amount by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is thirteen-thousand, thirty-three dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Sixteen as read? Mr. Colin Jandro, do I hear a second? Sir, your name? Any discussion or questions regarding Article Sixteen? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Thirteen, Sixteen passes. Article Seventeen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service. The amount recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen is two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Seventeen as read? Mr. Evans Bay, do I hear a second? Eddie Ford. Any discussion or questions regarding Article Seventeen? Paul?
I just want to clarify on debt service on Seventeen. It wouldn't really regard the DDP debt service on food stamps, because every time you call that Popee number, I know that's been cut in the wrong places when Governor LaPrae was in office, and that need, that amount needs to go back where it was, so I found bringing it up here tonight.
Is anybody prepared to address the issue of debt service? Mr. Picard?
Okay, so, I don't think we're talking about the same thing here. This debt service budget is for equipment or loans that we have on the town's books that we pay for on an, you know, like annual sums every year.
Any other questions or further discussion on Article Seventeen? Mr. Micho?
I see that last year, there were, or there was nothing for that payloader. Did they get one this year for, or are they getting one for the, this next year? Because I see there was nothing on last year's budget for that.
Mr. Picard?
So, a payloader was purchased last year, and that installment is in this budget here. I'll just give you a breakdown of what's in the debt service budget for this year's appropriations. Public Works Truck Lease for thirty-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. The, an old paving CSO loan, that amount is one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, two-hundred dollars. We have a Skidsteer lease with the Public Works Department, that is fifteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. We have a payloader lease, and that amount annually is thirty-six-thousand, five-hundred dollars, and we have the beginnings of our downtown revitalization loan, first payment, which is due this year, in this fiscal year, is for print, excuse me, interest only, is forty-seven thousand dollars, and that comprises the amount that we have in this year's warrant for debt service.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Yes, sir.
This is a budget meeting, right? We're going over the budget? I know these are articles, but the articles all comprise of the budget. Am I mis, misled? Because it's an annual report, so the money that's being asked for is part of an accumulative I'm taking in.
The, the budget is actually in this town report.
Right.
So, this, this budget, this warrant right here, is tied directly to the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because going back and looking on page, I guess it'd be forty-eight, there's no number on it. Page forty-eight, the percentage spent is one-hundred-and-forty point twenty-two.
Which page?
There's no number. I guess it's forty-eight. It's the one before forty-nine. I'm not being sarcastic, I'm just being honest. There's no number on the page. It was last year's budget, that's why I was confused.
Any additional questions regarding Article Seventeen or discussion regarding Article Seventeen? There being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Seventeen as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Seventeen passes. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to ratify the pollution control, sewer operation, and maintenance O and M and debt service budget in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to determine the due date for sewer bill payment and to set the rate of interest at seven percent per annum on the unpaid balance of sewer bills. The article is recommended by this Finance Committee and by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Eighteen? Mr. Jandro, Colin Jandro, do I hear a second? Mr. Violet? Any discussion or questions regarding Article Eighteen? There being no questions or discussion, all those in favor of accepting Article Eighteen as read, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Eighteen passes. Article Nineteen, to see what sum of money, if any, the town will raise and appropriate for the Town of Mount Owaska Sequasentennial Celebration, eighteen sixty-nine to two thousand nineteen. The amount recommended by the Selectmen and the Board and the Committee, Finance Committee, is thirty thousand. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Nineteen as read? Mr. Carter, do I hear a second? Mr. Lison? Are there any questions or discussion regarding Article Nineteen? There being no questions or discussion regarding Article Nineteen, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Article Nineteen passes. Article Twenty, after the period of discussion, we're going to have to take a short break, because this is an article that requires a written ballot, and you'll be putting the ballots in the box back there. Article Twenty reads as follows. To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established for the Town of Mount Owaska by the State of Maine, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the foregoing articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Article Twenty is recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Do I hear a motion to accept Article Twenty as read? Kentario's son. And a second, please, Mr. Kent. Okay, any discussion or questions regarding Article Twenty? Yes, Mr. Dooford, please come to the mic.
What is the tax levy commit, the state of Maine, the State of Maine tax levy? Do we have the exact number for that?
Mr. Picard?
Thank you. So, the tax levy limit is, it's a law that ties municipal growth to, to actual growth in the community, value growth and income growth. There's a formula that we, we utilize, and it's provided by the, by the state, the Office of Policy Management or Public Management.
You'll need to speak into that mic, I don't think some people hear.
Sorry, sorry. So, what LD1 does, the calculation, we have a worksheet that we have to write through, and in the event where our municipal budget exceeds five percent growth, okay, there's, it's a complex formula, we have to get this sort of vote where you guys vote to agree to increase our levy limit. This year, we have the article in there, because it's pretty much a place mark, we put article that we put in every warrant. This year, we have not exceeded our levy limit, so we actually don't need to vote on this, but we put it in there anyway, just as past practice, like we've done in previous years.
Well, you still haven't answered my question. What is the, the state limit this year for the Town of Mount Owaska?
This year, under the formula that's provided by the state, our levy limit is actually twenty-five, twenty-nine percent, and so we are actually at eleven, eleven-point-six-six percent of our levy limit, so we are way under, we are actually way under our, our levy limit.
So, what is going to be the tax value? What is going to be our, our tax commitment this year? What's the percentage?
Excuse me, the tax commitment, what, what's your question?
Well, it's two-point-two, it's twenty-point-seven percent, or is it nineteen-point-three?
This isn't tied to a nominee, this is something totally different.
So, that doesn't tie up with our property taxes?
No, doesn't.
Does it tie with our property taxes?
No, it does not.
So, can I ask that question today? What is our property taxes going to be for this year? At what level is it going to be at?
So, right now, with our budgets, with school budget and town budget combined, we're projecting, the board has to agree to, at a future meeting, once all of our business is done here tonight, to commit the taxes, we're projecting likely about a half mil increase in our, over the last year's tax commitment.
Any additional discussion or questions regarding Article Twenty? There being no additional questions or discussion, this is where you take these little pink slips, and you tear them, and you put the one that you want in the ballot box. I need to inspect the ballot box, so I make sure it's empty, and then you vote. Ladies and gentlemen, the ballot purse has completed its count. The vote on Article 20 is forty-three yes, twenty-eight no. Article 20 passes. That's all the articles of business before the town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Dubey and the second by Paul. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, raise your hand. All those opposed, meeting adjourned.
If you can take the tape off of that and get together, make sure it's complete.
Are you running the camera?
I think it just wants to be later there. Is he there?
Yeah, bring your camera out. Leave it in Mr. Mike's office. Put that on my desk.
Okay.
Lock the doors. On your way down, get the lights.
Where's Jason?
Jason, that's what it is.
Thank you.
Seems you had different bias. Screaming it all live on Facebook, so it's like, now I gotta pick up the cameras.